Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:01 and the date is March 8, 2011. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. The Board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking full part in discussions and becoming a voting member in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are five members of the Board: Betty Hollow, John Golsey, Joan Kornansky, alternate Kay Towesley, and Michelle Drebel, Chair. Also present are our zoning administrator, John Paskey, and Secretary Paul Schenbacher. The Board operates according to the following procedure. The Chair will name and describe the case. The zoning administrator or secretary will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The appellant or their representative will give reason why the appeals should be viewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Testimonies on the floor shall be closed. The Board will deliberate and render a decision. Alternate Lisa Carson just arrived. According to Athens City Code Section 23.07.03B, the Board has power to grant variances from the strict application of the code provided. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the code is observed. Public safety and welfare are secured and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 23.07.10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the Board finds, based on direct specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions has been supported. Practical difficulty and undue hardship: Because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purpose. Exceptional circumstances: There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights: Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity. While a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone and the same vicinity. Minimum variance: The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment: The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature: The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Any person resident or officer, department or appointed body of the city of Athens agreed by decision of the Board, may petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the Board to the applicant. We have one case on tonight's agenda. That would be case number 11-03B. It's zoned R1, 10 Mound Street, and Mr. Dan DeLuca is the appellant. The Board is required to take testimony under oath. Anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on the agenda, please stand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay. So our voting member tonight will be Kay?
Yes.
Okay. But Lisa can certainly discuss, right? All right. So Paul, do you have any comments?
Um, it's pretty self-explanatory. They want to build a new house pretty much on the exact same footprint as the existing house. The only thing I wanted to point out was that the size of this particular lot, it's 50 feet wide and 54 feet deep. And of course with R1 bulk controls with the front yard of 25 feet and a rear yard of 30 feet, they are allowed to have negative 1 feet as far as front and back. And for a lot in R1 that's narrower than what the current metal one is, instead of the bulk side, bulk controls of 8 feet and 20 feet, that is 8 feet on each side, please, you can use 10 percent roll on either side. So a 50-foot wide lot, they could have side setbacks of 5 feet on each side.
Is that lot is smaller or the same as the other lots in the neighborhood? Are they saying?
Um, for what, in this median area, actually, if you look at this thing that I passed out to most of you, in this little picture at the top, you can see that at least those three lots there look like they're originally measured out to be 50 feet wide, as close as possible. As it goes up Mound Street, there is varying lengths. This is one of the oldest neighborhoods in town, so.
I thought I had, there's a house behind that in the alleyway that is a much smaller lot.
Yeah. I don't know for sure, but it looks like this lot was cut in half at one point so that that house in the back could be built. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Paul, I have a question on one of the pages that we received. I think it's a form that City Safety Director signs as a refusal. It says setbacks as in displayed on a drawing, but I didn't have a drawing.
Oh, you have one.
I have a drawing of the house, of the structure, proposed structure.
Yeah.
But not of how that structure sits.
Oh, okay.
That did exist, as far as I know.
I don't have one either.
No, that was amended in. But if you look at the drawing that they did give, the width of the proposed house and the width of the proposed house matches up with the side and rear and front setbacks. So it won't be 2 feet from the alley side, it's your face in the house, and the other side setback is more than the minimum. So let's see here if that is.
Well, I guess my comment is, yes, I sat down and did all that work, but I think it would be good, in most cases, we have a drawing of the actual property, how the structure sets on the property, and so we can actually see the setbacks rather than me spending.
I believe you did that also because sitting on the same foundation, pretty much, so.
Well, it doesn't make any difference. It doesn't make any difference, right?
And this is obviously a grandfathered house. It was built and does not meet any of our current regulations whatsoever. Any other questions? How close, do we know how close that house that sits behind it?
Well, that would be one of the issues. We, I mean, you could, I didn't measure the backyard.
Right.
And then, so it was very difficult to determine.
I worry that we can discuss this later. But there's fire code issues here.
So.
The house is our D and B in there.
That's like here?
Yeah.
But there's space.
Back to back. He's the one that made here.
Kay, can I ask you a question? The rear of the house is already down here. This green part will not be there, right? The new one's already going to the back of B right here.
The house, I own the house in the back of it as well, and it's actually set off to the right of this house a little bit. They're not back to back, so just.
I'll be ready for Mr. DeLuca to approach. Okay. Would you like to come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Dan DeLuca, 15 Dell Drive, Athens, Ohio.
Thank you.
As we're talking here, basically, we have a house there that is 100 years old, set on a limestone foundation, which is actually on the alleyway, which is almost impossible to replace, just the foundation. I had people from, you know, people come up and tell me that, you know, a house should be redone or whatever on multiple occasions. I just think that, you know, with a new house in there, we're not asking for any increased occupancy or anything like that. We just want to put a nicer product out that's more easy to eye to people. I have pictures of the houses currently there.
And it does not have a second floor currently, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. So that your third bedroom is back here in this B and D section? Because you said you're going to have the same amount of occupants.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And also too is being able to provide off-street parking. There over the years have been a number of issues with people. It's right on that hillside, it's kind of a blind spot, and people got their cars, you know, hitting that kind of thing, so hopefully that will alleviate a bit of that problem. And, you know, pretty much, there's quite a few two-story houses right in that general area as well. This is currently the house that's there. I'll bring it all up. I just want to explain to you, now I've handed it to you.
Sure, okay.
This is a house that I built at 14 Mound Street. There was one at, I think it was 13 Mound, that they tore down and rebuilt as well. This is kind of a sketch of the way a new little lot, that we would have like white vinyl fencing instead of wood fencing. What would be.
Joan, if I may, I worked out the dimensions, if you guys want to jot them down there. As you're looking at the floor plan, it would be 2 foot on the right hand, or left-hand side along the alley, which is what the existing house is at, 7 foot in the front yard, 21 foot on the right side.
That's including the parking spaces or?
This is from building, as a building's a property line. And 11 foot on the rear.
Right, so my question is, right, I did all that already. I mean, it states that specifically. Is that front setback of 10 feet from the curb?
From the property line. 7 foot from the property line.
Is that the curb?
Right away.
Right away line.
Right away line.
About 10 feet in from the curb?
It's about, you'd have a 12.
The right away is, I believe, wider than the actual street on Mound there. Again, if you look at this thing, the lines in front of it are the right away line, and that's slightly wider than the street itself.
Correct.
One other thing is, we did, at the parking, we had enough space to go like, put them all on the right side, or we could put two on the right and one behind. We didn't really, as far as to my last, like, what would it matter if there's a preference for you guys?
I was assembling over there, looking at the north and south, and there was all the houses lined up pretty nicely. And you're, you know, you're putting in the same footprint, but you're putting two stories now.
Right.
And that's about 12 feet closer to the street than the rest of the houses.
12, I'm sorry.
It would be about 12 feet closer to the street than the rest of the houses. And being two-story tall, that, my concern is that it's not going to look very nicely. It's going to be eyesore in the front, just being two.
I think it would look a lot better than what's there now.
My preference would be to go maybe further back, if you can.
If I was allowed to, I would.
Did you say that, did you say that you?
My, the back lot.
But also, can you, did it to the same property?
I never, I never dolled into that because.
There's a structure on it anyways.
No, you can't really.
My understanding was more allowed to go back, but you know, if I was allowed to, it worked out that way.
So you couldn't move back? You said you stopped where B and D, you know, that's on your sheet here.
You're sitting.
That would be about 12 feet, wouldn't it? To bump it back that far?
Well, that's what we have reserved as far as the parking, so that would be, you know, if we put the three parking spots on the right side, we could probably move it back if you gave a variance for that.
But isn't that side slope?
The back side?
No, the side.
Um, I mean, the whole road right there is on a hill, and you could put a retaining wall that would.
What are you planning to do? Keep the cars from sliding off?
Well, we have a poor foundation for the house itself, and then we would also, on the parking on the right, we can have a retaining wall there as well.
You could, or that's your plan?
That, I mean, that's what we've talked about.
The drainage on that piece of property looks like a nightmare.
Well, I mean, if we have a flat surface, we can drain it right into the main sewer as far, you know, from, off of that right side, because it's not a long shot.
Are you saying you would build a retaining wall and then put some fill in to make a level lot? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I mean, the right side, I have a picture of it, and it's not terribly, it's.
The right side is very sloped. I walk by it every day.
Well, I mean, it's very easy to be dug out too, to flatten that out.
Right. I guess my concern about retaining walls is, the house just to the north of it, that would be just on the other side of the alleyway, recent addition, about 10 years old. It had been an empty lot for as long as I know.
Side step too, and then one on the side.
So retaining wall, this place, is not falling down into the alleyway. If you go down to the house just south of number 10, which is, I believe, a two-story house, very old, has a driveway to the south of it. The people that used to own the house next to it, which is actually facing Carpenter Street and the Triopsi Park, if you look at that retaining wall, it's all falling down, and the people complain that because three cars were parked on that, it's just too much weight. So I think part of the issue that's going on here with putting a two-story structure on that piece of property, whether you put a retaining wall or not, I think it's very evident the retaining walls are falling down, because that is such a steep slope, and we have no way to figure out, I mean, I'm not a knowledge.
I mean, of course, the retaining walls are 50, 60 years old to begin with, so I mean, a lot of those retaining walls that you're talking about, that.
No, the one next to the alleyway is not necessarily that old. It's not as old as the solid cement one that is.
I know, but it's.
Next to number eight.
Barely aged.
Uh, well, it wasn't, it wasn't falling, I walk by it every day. It wasn't falling until that two-story structure was put on that empty lot just above the alleyway, and I watched it creep out, creep out, creep out, and then last year it fell down. So, and I do have to say, you did mention that there were quite a few two-story houses, but along that side of the street, with the exception of number eight, and then the large house right at the very top there, this is Crebs' old house, all those houses going all the way up to Ark are one story, with the exception, I think, of one which looks like it's a.
Well, they actually have two stories. I mean, there's a story.
Go up, right, right. But this is not what you're talking about, you're putting all of it out.
Yeah, and with the spot we're on that, you can't really do it that way, just because it's, I mean, the way that's lots of them, you're on a slope there. The other ones off the hill are just.
Could you build a basement?
I don't think it would be, I don't think it would work out very well there.
Because the drainage?
Because you're going to put, I mean, if you put a basement in, it's just like, I don't know, it would make it awful, awful.
Well, the house, the new house that was constructed on, across the street in that old footprint, that's only one story, and then they have a lower level. Granted, their slope's a little different, but, but for at least the front and the one side, that lower level is all covered by soil, because of the way the hill slopes down across the street on Mound Street. It's just very obvious on, on the south side, and it's, they did a one story there, and they're on the same slope.
I mean, I, I mean, people are talking, it just seems like if we have a retaining wall there, that would resolve a lot of problems. I mean, maybe they're, maybe they're wrong, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure the retaining wall's going to do the trick. You put that much weight on it, and then you're going to park two or three cars on it, that's just pretty massive. I notice that large parking lot right there.
Yeah, and again, that's going to be a very flat formed surface there. That's not like it's slant or anything like that as well.
Talking about like that.
The actual parking is going to be pretty flat. I mean, there's not.
I mean, you own several properties in this neighborhood.
Right.
So you know that there's constantly shifting and moving, and I mean, there's just a lot of.
There's in all Athens, I mean.
Yeah, but our, this older neighborhood is pretty bad.
We would require the retaining wall to be engineered, done by an engineer or architect, so, to take into consideration what the land shift, the soil shift, and the design load. That's one of our requirements on.
I think with two walls in between in a small distance would provide a lot of strength.
I guess my question is, the new structure, being two stories, would total 1,944 square feet in this picture figuring, and I don't quite see how that equates to two of what you have now.
Wait, I'm not sure.
A bottom and a top of what you have now, because it looks as if.
Well, I mean, the house I have now, it's in bad shape, it's weighty, it's everything else.
Well, I know, but it's still.
It's not a practical house.
Right, I understand that. I'm just saying that if I look at the dimensions from this parcel piece.
Right.
It looks like the dimensions of the main part of the house are 27 by 30, and the new house would be 27 by 36, doubled. So I guess I'm saying I don't quite see.
There's a bad part of that, which is actually.
This is coming off.
Because you have the.
B is not coming off.
D is coming off.
The D is coming off.
Well, so that, that makes the current house even stronger.
This is actually 16 plus 14 is 30.
Right.
Just in the grain.
Yeah, okay.
And then you have, and then the B is, you have the additional.
Okay, and even if I add the B in, which is 84 square feet.
A, B, and C are 848 square feet.
A, B, and C are 800, okay, 800 and what square feet?
848, say 850, so two times that would be 1,700.
Okay, I don't add it up that way, but thank you. Okay, that's helpful.
Do you have any more questions?
Oh, I do have a question about ingress and egress. It seems to me it would be almost impossible to enter the rear of the lot off of that alleyway because of the slope that it drops directly off of the alleyway. There's actually, I don't know, six, eight-inch tall cement kind of curve, looks like an old lentil that runs back there. And, and then beyond that, the backyard there drops below even where the street is. There's a side, there's stairwells that go down to the back of the house. So I just don't see where the rear of the lot, it would be very practical to put any parking back there. You would have to raise that whole section up just to come in and out of there.
Yeah, but I'd say it would be easy. Everyone's just saying it can't be done.
If the retaining wall is put on the right-hand side of the property, he does have enough room to make the parking two spaces wide, and therefore he would have adequate parking without the one on the rear, and it would allow him to move the house back a little bit.
That would be the preferred plan.
To move the house back?
And have a parking on the right.
This is your other house that you own? Is that the one? You said it was off to the.
Yes.
Okay.
So then we would have three staff parking spots on the left side of the house.
Right side.
Right side of the house.
Two staffs, one, actually, probably we have four spots in that way. Two, two and two staff, depending on what you want to do.
Well, we're not putting four people in an R1 in a rental chaunt.
No.
So don't give them the idea.
I'm just saying he could.
Well, that's, my question is, backing in and out of that on the slope? I mean, so cars are going to be backing in and out of that?
Every house there has a driveway that does the same thing right now.
Um, well, the house across the street, Thorndike's Place, I think just has one parking.
Yeah, but it's still poor, I mean, you're asking about poor.
It's true, but it's very open. It's very open there. There's a whole lot of trees that run along from what I'm assuming is the end of the property of 10 Mound Street before you, between the property of 10 and 8 Mound Street, which is an ex-house. So it seems to be very closed there. The other property just north of Thorndike's has a large lot where you could turn around in, so I don't think, I've never seen people backing out of that driveway.
If they did back out across the street, and, I mean, I'm seeing them back out across the other house you're talking about as well, and just.
I just would throw this out. There's a sidewalk in front there that's brick. I mean, are you considering redoing the sidewalk as part of your?
That was never brought up.
Since we're supposed to be a pedestrian-friendly community?
Right. That's what we could, you know.
I mean, when you look at it, it's pretty danger, I mean, you're walking in the street. I mean, I wouldn't walk on that. I don't know, do you walk on that or walk in the street?
I walk in the street because nobody maintains that. I mean, the property owners are supposed to maintain their sidewalks. I maintain mine. Not everyone does. Some of the houses across the street maintain theirs. It's generally gets overgrown, trash gets thrown on it, nobody picks it up, beer bottles. It's difficult. In terms of parking, what were you thinking of using to surface the parking area with?
Cement. We could go grabbing for help, but I think cement's, you know, make the whole thing a lot stronger.
Again, on the slope, do you know the people who own eight? I mean, I just wonder with all that cement and all that construction, if that's going to work on that property there too, in terms of their foundations, since everything's so close?
I mean, I think their house has its own problems, and I really, you know, can't answer that, but.
So you haven't any communication with them?
He did come in our office, and he just wanted to see the plans, and he didn't, I thought he'd be here this evening. He didn't indicate that he had too many problems, or that he was asking about the height of the building, and he said that he was concerned with three stories or anything like that, but other than that.
He had mentioned anything about.
He, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but.
So we don't have any comments?
No.
Well, you know, part of the problem with this, this parking on the right-hand side is this house is going to sit right up next to the road, and you're going to have a dead space, you know, maybe to see.
If you want to have it moved back, that would be the option, if you, if you want parking on the right.
Have you considered not having the porch in the front and up above?
No.
Because that's a.
I mean, it gives you aesthetics to it, I mean, that's what.
Well, it also is a party, I mean, it's a, it's something that people look to move in.
When they're renting a house, they look for that, for a porch, yes.
Right.
So on the second story, on the front of the house, there's a porch and a study.
Mm-hmm.
I can't exactly tell how you would access that study.
There's, there is a door off to the left, I'm not sure which door you're looking at.
This is what I have.
And you basically just have a door right out here.
So it would have its own private door?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the second.
So it could be considerably turned into a fourth bedroom?
Is the second story comes all the way to the front of the?
I'll probably make that a porch if you want.
Across the whole front?
That'll be upstairs if that's, if that's a problem for him, but.
You can see how our minds would follow to a fourth bedroom.
Sure, I would, okay. That's how I operate.
Well, you know, the possibility is that you do one story, two bedrooms, nice little bundle of two. nice little bungalow, two parking, less weight on the ground, less effect overall. And that is a possibility. There are some two-bedroom bungalows around Mount Street. And, and that would be much more in keeping with the neighborhood than...
I mean, it'd be closer to the house right next to it. So the house at fourteen would be very similar as far as keeping with the neighborhood and it's...
So that's your property also?
Yes, it is.
Would you mind in the spring spreading some grass in the front yard and putting some straw down?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Because if that's going to be a reflection on what this is going to look like, aside from the front yard being gravel and dirt in an R1 neighborhood, and then the sore access between the curb and the sidewalk is this two-foot-high white pipe with a diameter of about two feet sticking up that is totally unattractive. I've never seen anything like that on the east side. So, you know, if that's what it's going to look like, then I'm not very pleased with it, right?
Which one of these are houses on the street right now?
Well, that's because it's two or three years old and, and, but you know...
Not that it's six years old at now.
No, there's some very nice houses on Mount Street.
Yeah, there is. I said one of the nicest, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
Is anything else that you would like to tell us?
No, I mean, I think it's, you know, straightforward. It's basically if, if I don't get approval for this, this house is just going to sit there, get older, things fall apart. We're trying to put something, you know, nicely in there. If you guys wanted it to be moved back and parking to the right, and that's what, you know...
And sidewalk fixed?
And the sidewalk, and we'd be happy to do that.
I guess I do have a question. So why is it not an option to make it a two-bedroom attractive, you know?
I mean, I have a three-bedroom permit on it now. For me, it's just not...
There is only two renters and actually the person that lived there went up on the door because I wanted to measure the house, right? Invited me in and said, "I'd like to show you this place." And he said, "It's really a three-bedroom, but I don't even want to tell you what he said about code." And he's called many times, right? But they only have two people living in there, so you couldn't really make this...
He told me.
I will, I promise you.
Betty, you have a question?
Yes, my question was whether you couldn't have a three-bedroom house in fifteen hundred square feet that would meet your needs and your tenant's need and still leave a slightly more room for perhaps to move the house back a little bit?
I mean, I haven't really looked at it. I don't have an answer for that.
Well, it is true. I mean, the porches take up a large amount of space. You know, they take up some space and...
We could probably still have a porch.
I had a question in here. Maybe Paul or John can answer that. If this is going to be a rental for two, don't you need two parking for the tenants non-stacked?
No, they could be stacked.
They could be stacked, okay.
In R1?
In R1. And it's rental for three, right?
Yes.
You already have the permit for three.
Yes.
Without parking. Grandfather right now.
Grandfather.
So he could ask for that variance, just build the house, move it to where you want, and leave the parking on the street as it is already.
I think, you know, I'm sorry you haven't considered a slightly smaller house, which I do think could take three bedrooms. But given the plan that you presented, I think I would be happier if the porch upstairs went all the way across.
Okay.
Because you do have some room in front of those two upstairs bedrooms where people can put a computer or put some chairs or put a little study space. It's not like it's just the two bedrooms upstairs. There is some hanging...
Yeah, it's not extremely...
The hallway.
I suppose that, I mean, there...
We've got some more space back here.
We'd like to have the bigger rooms, that way they can kind of have their own...
Yeah, but it wouldn't change the size of the rooms. It would just eliminate this tantalizing study space.
And of course, those of us that live in the neighborhoods do understand why porch, and porches can be on the first floor or second floor. But, you know, there have been some serious, serious injuries that have occurred. There's a lot of glass bottles that get lobbed off a second and third story into the street and got a walking dog in the cars and...
Sure.
You know, I mean, it's just, it's kind of a issue that happens all the time. Serious injuries being the most important. But I know that your railings would be up to code.
Right.
Current code.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present tonight that is against having a thing said? No. Any final comments? Anything further for... Anybody for Betty? Okay.
I like the idea.
He didn't swear in.
You did swear in.
He can swear in now.
Would you like to swear in now?
Sure.
Sure.
And then we'll have you, why don't you come up to the podium and then we can, we can see you there. So do you swear to affirm that any testimony you will present to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name and address.
Michael Higgins, twenty-five Courage Street, apartment one thirteen.
Okay.
I just think that everything like, like if there's newer houses being built on the street, I don't see why there would be a reason that you wouldn't want to like keep like renovating the street. If like there's a problem with the house, and obviously like it seems like there's problems. He said the floors are all wavy and stuff. Why wouldn't you want the tenant to be happier by like fixing the house?
And the neighborhood look better?
Well, I mean, if there's already a house, what'd you say, fourteen, it'd already been redone?
Right.
Well, fourteen could be redone, but I couldn't eat, then why couldn't six?
And then the whole street will look like Stewart Street.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I mean, there's problems with the houses as they are. I mean, you should do something.
You're making an excellent point.
You should do something about this. I'm not sure. I mean, I live in, I live in Westerville, which is a suburb of Columbus. And, I mean, uptown Westerville is like, I mean, they tried to keep it like really similar, but even though they kept it similar, I mean, they still had to renovate all the houses. I worked for a small construction company in high school. And the only thing I even did was renovate houses in uptown Westerville. And my friends live there, my friends' parents live there, and they don't see me mind. That was, that was all I could say.
Thank you. Any further comments from the floor? Mr. DeLuca, is there anything further you'd like to add?
No.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Talking and answering our questions. Okay. Ready to close the floor at this point? And we can discuss this. Anybody ready to make a motion?
We can have conditions if you want to.
We can add conditions and someone would like to inform it?
Well, I think before you start adding conditions, they have to be conditions that Mr. DeLuca is willing to have added. Just because we add them doesn't mean anything unless he's agreed that this is part of what he can overdo.
Well, this is not a condition, but, this is not a condition, but I'd rather see the house go back, you know?
Well, the backyard is what, eleven feet, I believe?
Yeah, let's go take it one foot, you know, and then that piece of front would minus the rest of the house.
Well, I think, you know, I went there this morning and tried to see, is there any kind of line here that he's going to be with or without? And it's kind of like...
It's twelve feet closer, and imagine it's going to be two stories.
Twelve feet closer than what?
The rest of the house.
The rest of the house.
But the houses are not, not uniformly in line?
They are pretty much, they are, if you...
Not in line?
Well, to my eyes, yes.
On John's side, they pretty much are, yeah, they are in line.
I didn't see this.
And then I was going to be twelve feet closer, and it makes you start to, you can't do a story here.
I don't think it's twelve foot closer.
I don't think so.
I measured it.
Looking at the other houses on the fat path, I don't see that.
It would sit more back in line with this house if you moved it back about ten or twelve feet, correct?
Well, if you have them back twelve feet, you don't have twelve feet.
You don't have twelve feet in it.
You don't have twelve feet, that's eleven.
Ten.
You have eleven feet.
You have eleven feet and then you have no rear setback.
Yeah, we don't.
And, you know, granted, the appellant owns a rear property, but what if he doesn't always own the rear property, then you've stuck somebody's house, right?
Well, it would just be sort of silly to have no, no...
No rear setback.
Which would be a setback at all. This is not a commercial building.
Correct, exactly. It's in an R1, so...
All right.
Is anyone willing to make a motion?
I'm willing to make a motion and then we'll see what kind of conditions you think you could possibly apply. I move that we grant a variance to the property at ten Mount Street from section ACC twenty-three, ten oh one, Table A, Schedule of Vault Controls, to allow construction of a building of approximately nine hundred and forty-four feet, two-story building, with a front setback of seven feet, where twenty-five feet is the minimum requirement, of rear setback of eleven feet, where thirty feet is the minimum requirement, a left side setback of two feet, where eight feet is the minimum requirement, and a lock coverage of thirty-four percent, where thirty percent is the maximum allowed, with the condition that three parking spaces will be provided somewhere on the property.
Could you repeat that last thing?
The condition was that there would be three parking spaces on the property, on the site.
Betty, in terms of condition, I guess I'm still having issues with the weight of the whole structure and the parking.
Well, I understand all of those concerns and I think they're quite legitimate. But what we are asked to decide tonight is can we, can he have setbacks that are less than would normally be required when the setbacks are not going to be substantially different from what are argued there?
But aren't we also talking about, so he has to have parking?
Well, he doesn't, he doesn't have to. He's already grandfathered without it. I'm putting, he suggested that he could and would like to do it. So I've added that as a condition, that without it, the variance would not be legitimate or sustained. The sidewalk, I would hope that he would be, having put up a decent house, would want a decent sidewalk in front of it instead of, or maybe a better brick sidewalk. He's going to have to have a curb cut there. So the sidewalk is going to have to have something done to it, I think, because it will be partially destroyed. So you're going to have to do something about that. I would hope that you wouldn't put up a new house and not put some grass around or try to keep the cars from sliding on down the hill as they sit on the slope. So I'm counting on Mr. DeLuca to not, to have a property that justifies the expense he will have in tearing down one house and putting up a new one.
Well, my question, going back to the parking, is this, and this is the reason I have the question, Betty. And maybe John or Paul can respond to this. I thought if you take a structure all the way down and it's grandfathered, even if you rebuild on the same footprint, you lose your grandfather. Which is why we're here for the setbacks. We're also here for the parking. So parking is...
Parking is not part of this. It does not say a word about parking.
That's because he added something on the front. He's not asking for a grant for parking. He's got it on there.
So I've added that as a condition, which I think would get some cars off the street, make it easier to back out if you didn't have cars parked on either side of the driveway, limiting you. And again, I understand the danger of blocking, of backing out in a situation like that. But Athens has situations like that all over town. Not to mention the fact that on my street, which is perfectly flat, I live on Maplewood, two times a day, the street is filled and my driveway is infinitely tightly closed by people coming to pick up and drop off their kids. Most of them drive in very large vans. It is difficult for me at several hours a day to get my car out of the driveway and there is no slope. There is no anything, but it's treacherous for me. So I don't think that this is a unique situation. People will have to watch out.
Oh, I know that, okay, but this is not where I'm going with this.
Okay.
You know, the city approved this large parking lot, which is just on the other side of the alleyway. And, and the idea of that parking lot was to be used by those structures that didn't have onsite parking or it was too awkward to have onsite parking for those structures. And it would seem to me, even though I think that onsite parking is important if it's available, that this would be one of the ideal situations because the proximity is...
Very close.
Very close. Rather than, I'm trying to eliminate some of the problems that I see on the piece of property.
Once again, what we're asked to do is to consider whether we will give him permission to continue with the setbacks that essentially he has. And I don't really, I understand all of your concerns, but I don't know that it is really our job. And in some cases, we have been told that it is not our job to consider ingress and egress very seriously. And in some cases, we have been deliberately told, you are not to consider the safety of this. The code office will do that for you in terms of driving in and out.
I just read it there, right?
Well, we've had, when the bank from Logan wanted to come down and I said, "Oh, no, that's not safe. You can't do that ingress or whatever." And they said, "Please be quiet, Mrs. Saloget, it's not your concern." So...
But I believe our concern is to worry about the size.
Yes.
The drainage issues that may occur with basically all of this piece of property being either a structure or cement.
No, thirty-four percent of it will be covered.
But that includes the parking?
That doesn't include the parking.
He has just gotten away from this new law, which Mr. Pesci is going to discuss in a minute, by a few days. So legally...
Yes, the parking doesn't count.
No.
Not with his...
Not with his...
It doesn't count as lock coverage.
His application.
And did you want to mention?
You know, I said get rid of the study because there's a possibility of just adding another student or a friend who comes to stay long-term.
Should that be a condition?
I don't know, because if you, if you put the porch all the way across, then you said, "Well, what about the people who are throwing bottles out and screaming across the street and having a big party?" So as I said earlier, I would prefer not to have any porches out.
I don't know that we can really, we can really discuss how he structures this house. We can only discuss the setbacks and I think...
Well, we could.
I think we can discuss a lot of things.
We could discuss them and, as I've said, I think he could have a smaller house and still have three bedrooms, but he would have to agree to that before we made a variance to say, "Okay, you can have a fifteen hundred square foot house." He hasn't said that he would do that.
And this house just has a first-floor porch?
Yeah.
Does it have a two-story porch?
Maybe we just continue with what we have.
Yes, and let's go forward.
And then, you know, it changes plans and have a different meaning.
Okay.
All right, who is going to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right. We're going to do the findings. So, practical difficulty and new hardship.
I would say there is no difficulty in here because, practical difficulty because the property could be utilized with a smaller structure.
It would still have to have setbacks.
Setbacks, yeah. But it could be, it could be a smaller, you know, could be longer-term setbacks.
I think you have to admit that it would create a hardship for him that may or may not, in your opinion, may not be necessary or may be necessary.
Currently, he has a.
He has a grandfather.
He has a grandfather, three rental, three-home rental. If he builds a one-home rental with all the setbacks or two bedrooms, the, you know, the income will not be the same. That would be the hardship.
Well, the hardship is there in the fact that, and the exceptional circumstances are that this is an unusually small lot. It is a tiny lot and, you know, ideally, maybe should never have been built on at all, but there it is. And so it is grandfathered. He can continue to have it in the condition that it's in with no parking or he can build something new. And maybe it's not this. If we don't know, then maybe he'll come back with something different.
Exceptional circumstances.
The size of a lot, I think.
Well, this is the same as the next two hundred lots, you know? Same size as the next two.
Nevertheless, they are extraordinarily small.
That's true. That's true.
And the property is very old. I mean, the property is very old. Needs upgraded. I would be concerned about the safety. Preservation of eco-property rights. We don't have anyone here who has property around to say so anything can wear or other.
I think that means that they're probably giving more privilege to this property than the others in the same.
Well, there are two properties right next door that are equally small if what we were given to look at is in the indication.
This is actually a fairly large house, the blue house.
Yeah, so. So the question is whether he can continue with what he has but with a newer house.
That's a two-story next door.
It's just farther down the hill, so it's not so obtrusive.
Okay, minimum variance?
Well, I think it could be a small structure and so I don't think this is necessarily minimum variance that is required to make possible reasonable use of the property.
Except that he is not making the house any larger on its footprint that it currently is.
Well, except that means under the new conditions, since he's rebuilding, so he's here for variance, so we can actually say that you could have a smaller dwelling on this piece of property. You could do that. It's the only possibility and that's all it's asking.
Absence of detriment?
Well, I think there's a possibility that that hillside on the east side of Mile Street is not as stable as people. Let's think through the collapsing retaining walls that are there. Particularly since the house at 14 Mile Street, since it was constructed, the retaining wall has collapsed. Which shows that I think that the property, the adjacent soil, the ground itself may not be very stable. I think there could be a detriment to the adjacent property, particularly 8 Mile Street.
Well, they must not think so particularly because they're not here tonight to talk about it. If he destroys his own property, then that's his own business, isn't it? He'll have to suffer the consequences.
Not of a general nature?
Not really. And I don't think they have that many teeny, weeny, weeny nuts in other areas. I live in an area with small lots, but they're not that small.
And there were a few over West Washington Street. I think we, that we dealt with by board, but.
All right. So, start with Ms. Kornanski?
No.
No.
I vote yes.
No.
No. And I will vote no as well. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Okay. I'm going to take your pictures. Thank you. Is there a discussion of an organizational meeting or we need to do the minutes first, probably?
Yeah, what I was going to ask is if you guys could decide on the minutes and then have the organizational meeting accepted and let's dismiss this one.
Any issues? Found our minutes? Any problems with the minutes?
I move they're approved.
A second. Second. All right.
And Pat Langdon?
No.